Okay, we're rolling.
Okay, all right, uh, so I'd like to call this meeting, oh, yes, I call it to order first, right?
Yes.
I'd like to call this meeting of the M. L. L. S. Commission to order on the twenty-fourth of June, two thousand and twenty-four at seven oh five P. M. Starting with some introductions, I will begin. I'm Danielle Monroe. I am the Chairwoman.
Nicholas Jordan, Commissioner.
That powerful alternate.
Joining us remotely.
Laura Ferguson, Commissioner.
Thank you very much, and Amanda Martinez, Recording Secretary.
Dave McCullum, M. W. Land, Director.
Thank you very much. All right, everyone here is a full member, so there's no need to seat anybody. Oh, you're not, that's right, okay. But you feel like a full member.
My presence.
I'm trying to remember, that's it, right? We're the only ones on the blue side of the aisle, everyone here, so I'm gonna seat you for, like, to seat Pat Carrefour for Hall and Pro.
Very good.
As opposed to Kevin.
It doesn't really make any difference. Both of them are of the, on the same political party. I believe they're maybe both independents?
No, they are both Rs, Madam Chair.
They're both Rs, okay. Uh, so it doesn't really make any difference, because all of these are. Let's see, all right, Mr. McCullum, do we have any changes or modifications to the agenda for this evening?
We do, Madam Chair, thank you for asking. I would ask that the Commission make a motion to remove the executive session that was scheduled on tonight's meeting agenda as an item from the meeting agenda.
I will make a motion to remove and amend the agenda to.
Discussion?
Sure.
Is that pertaining to one oh seven Plum Trees?
That, that was for, no, uh, that the executive session would have pertained to seven Rockwell Road, but because the agenda. Yeah, it's okay, because the agenda does not explicitly state that, then, um, i- i- it should be removed from the agenda, so that way, um, it's, uh.
Align with what is required for the disclosure of what's happening.
That's true, will Rockwell Road be discussed tonight?
Yes, I, I would plan to discuss that under staff comments.
Okay, this is the one that's been pending for a while, correct?
Uh, yes. Right.
Okay, uh, motion on the table? I didn't finish it, did I, Amanda?
No, there wasn't a second.
Did you get the?
Motion to strike the executive session.
Motion to amend, now, motion to amend the agenda to strike the executive session.
That's correct.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And it passes, all right. We have no new business tonight?
No, uh, the old business would be one oh seven Plum Trees Road, but they do not appear to be here, Madam Chair.
Do you have any idea whether they were planning to attend?
They had, uh, inquired when the next regular meeting would be, and I had advised them that it would be held tonight, seven P. M. in this room.
Is it possible to table the discussion of the new business until the end of the meeting?
Uh.
Opportunity to come?
If you want to, I, uh, I don't see any issue with doing that.
Sure, I'll give them the opportunity and see if they might be running late.
Sure.
Uh, so we should make another motion to amend the agenda again?
You should make your motion to table this too later in the meeting.
All right, so I'm gonna make a motion to table the new business until later in the meeting, perhaps?
Old business, one of seven.
Yes, I'm sorry, old business, I apologize, there is no new business, old business, table it until after Commission comments?
Second.
Discussion? No, second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, so moved, so that brings us to our not doing that, we don't have that, um, okay, so um, our regular meeting minutes, yes, and approving the meeting minutes, we're moving into the business?
Yes, that's correct.
All right, I'm done making motions, I'm tired.
I made a motion to revise the, uh, meeting minutes for May twentieth, that's written.
For the record, I've read, and the meeting minutes, and I've watched all the tape from all of the previous M. W. Land meeting, uh, five twenty is the one you're talking about, but I was not physically at the meeting, so I don't know if I'm allowed to, to.
Did you read them?
I read it, yeah, it looked good.
And, and you watched the recording?
Yeah.
Okay, if you would like to vote, I don't see why you can't.
Okay, so we have a motion, do we have a second?
Motion approved, the meeting minutes from five twenty, twenty twenty-four.
Are you seconding the motion, Nico?
Second.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Laura, are you, um, all in favor, abstaining?
Yeah.
And opposed? No, okay, so we're all accounted for, the motion passes. Okay. And now we have our first media invoice for a hundred and sixty-four dollars and seventy cents.
That's correct, this is for legal notices for the Commission's ruling on the permitted use as a right application for seven Rockwell Road.
Okay, thank you, Dave.
Question, does seven Rockwell Road pay the, or does the town pay the?
That's the, the town is paying the invoice for the legal notice fee.
Does that get passed on through to us again?
It does not.
Thank you.
Okay. You want to make a motion that we approve the invoice?
Make a motion that we approve the invoice for our first media services and the sum of a hundred and sixty-four dollars, seventy cents.
Thank you. Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, opposed, abstaining, no, motion passes, and that closes business, so I think we are moving into staff report.
Thank you, Madam Chair, um, I have a couple items on, uh, the document for tonight, I will try to make us take brief, don't think we have to worry about that too much. Um, the first of which is a citation for an appeal for a decision that this Commission made during its last regular reading regarding, um, the permitted use as a, uh, right, uh, ruling request that we just mentioned for the legal notice. Uh, this is public record, so I don't have any concerns, uh, distributing this at this time. Uh, anybody who wants to come down to our office or grab a copy, they can do so anytime. Uh, essentially, this means that, um, the, uh, applicant, Mr. Yorke and his, uh, counsel, um, uh, Neil Marcus, uh, do not agree with how the Commission, um, made that ruling, i- i- it pretty much spells their, their reasoning in, in that appeal. Um, Attorney Andrus will, uh, take this matter up for the Commission on their behalf. Uh, I can discuss, uh, further updates in depth with the Commission, uh, during their next meeting in an executive session if the Commission is so inclined. Um, otherwise, I don't think there's anything else that, uh, the Commission would have to do at this time. Um, I'll be preparing a return of record with, uh, the Recording Secretary, essentially, the, uh, transcripts, the exhibits, and any other items that Attorney Andrus thinks relevant to, uh, that process, uh, for brief. And, and the updates, I'll let you guys know. Um, happy to answer any questions that you guys may have on that.
When would the decision be rendered, same day, or usually take a week or two?
Uh, that's a good question, I, I, I don't think the judicial process is swift. Um, I, I don't want to get into the timeframe for that at this point, just because we're, we're so far out from that. And, um, of, of course, um, I believe the, the date for us to respond to this um, uh, happens tomorrow, so, um, I, I, I wouldn't want to speak on, on the timing for that process until any dates were set, uh, by them, because we're, we don't have any say in how the scheduling would work. Um, just, just so the, the, the Commission knows, I, I know, um, that they're looking for other updates on this possibly, if, if there are. Um, because the, the Commission had its, uh, had inquired if there were any options um, outside of this process during the last meeting when Attorney Andrus was here. Um, I'm still having those discussions with him, and if I have any updates for you guys, I will let you know.
So the initial hearing is scheduled for tomorrow?
Uh, so, so i- i- this, this, this essentially, uh, we have to, we have to acknowledge that we have received this appeal, uh, by tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay, and then, and then there will be dates that are set, uh, the, the, the most pertinent one for, for Attorney Andrus will be for when that brief has to be submitted. And then, I believe, uh, Attorney Marcus will submit a brief for his client, and then the two will go on from there at a date to be determined.
Okay.
So they're the only two to go to court?
That's correct, so I, I, I don't, I don't see why anyone else would have to be brought in for that process. Uh, but if there, if there is a need, I would be sure to let the appropriate persons know.
Obviously, I know you will anyway, but we, I'm sure, as a Commission, who have been very invested in this lengthy process, would like for your updates as to how.
Yes, yes, he, he, he was expecting that, that you guys, uh, would, would want, were, having, keeping a, a keen eye on this. Um, and as, as soon as he gets update on, on this, he'll pass them to me, and I'll, I'll pass them on to you. Um, but, but the judicial process, I, I don't want to put any expectations on how expedited it may be.
Would it be appropriate to hand back into our executive section?
Absolutely, if, if the Commission wants to ask him any questions, I don't see why that would be, I, I think that would be very appropriate to do that.
Yeah, it'd be great to keep talking with him.
Sure.
I know you started, you started last, last month.
So, so the Commission, uh, made their ruling at their last meeting, not, and that's all that was done, this, this.
He was there, I think.
That's correct, yeah.
And it was a good back and forth, I thought, but, I mean, he spoke a little bit, but it would be good to just.
Yes, absolutely. So, would, would the, would the Commission want to entertain having that be on the agenda for the next meeting, which would be July twenty, uh, July twenty seconds?
I certainly would, and anyone else want to comment on that?
I agree.
Nico?
Um, to have Attorney Andrus attend.
To have our executive session where we are updated in executive session on what's going on at the next meeting.
Our next regular meeting?
Yep.
Yeah, that'd be.
Laura, did you have any comments on that?
No, that's okay, that's good.
Thank you.
Okay, okay, so I, I, I will, um, uh, do my best to make sure Attorney Andrus is available for that, that, that meeting. Uh, in all likelihood, he would be participating remotely like he did for the, uh, last meeting, yes.
Should we discuss any part of this letter right now on public record with?
Yeah, uh, well, I, I mean, I, I, I don't think I would, um, uh, do the justice to it that, that Attorney Andrus could, but I'll give my best shot. What, what?
Yeah, or should we not stumble over it, should we wait until he says, I would love to hear what he has to say about each of these things? And he'll know, I know he'll know exactly.
Yeah.
What in here is like standard, I want to know what, first of all, in this letter, is basically standard issue, uh, oil and clay, as we would say in some of our meetings.
Yeah.
As part of, uh, an appeal letter written by Mr. Marcus, like, if this is his, I'm curious about that versus what actually are the bullet point meat and potatoes, uh, specific to this?
Yeah.
Appeal.
I, I would be careful because of going into litigation, I think during executive session, you could ask him that.
I, I, I think that would definitely.
That sounds like a good conversation, and I'm sure we'll all go home and review this material, and come to our next meeting prepared to have a, a value of biology. Yep.
Um, well, I'm sorry, I totally blint, I have two other things to go through.
Yep, any more discussion on Rockwell? Okay.
Okay, um, the, the, the second thing, um, is, um, Mr. Jordan asked me to take a look at, um, the property that this Commission approved, I believe it would have been late last year for Jennifer's Way. Uh, it was, uh, approved for a single-family dwelling construction. I went out there to take a look at the, uh, property, um, well, it's, it's essentially unannounced, but I, I, I did let, uh, the property owner know this afternoon that I was maybe stopping by just to take a look. Um, I'm gonna have photos up on, uh, the screen here, hope everybody can see those. Okay. Can everybody see what's going on with the photos?
This is pointed towards the street?
Of course, I'll.
Which, oh, there's the house.
It's actually.
Yeah, so, so Jennifer's, yeah, Jennifer's Way is in the foreground, and this is the driveway to get to the single-family dwelling that, that was off
My gosh.
Uh, in the distance, okay?
Yep.
Um, I, I don't know what the Commission's recall is, but there's a water course that's, uh, in, uh, this wooded area over here off to, it would be the south, I guess, and it meanders around the site and goes way off in the background, wrapping around the, uh, western, uh, side of the property. Um, this is, um, uh, going back towards Jennifer's Way, the, the previous shot was where, well, I don't know if you really can see my cursor up on the, the screen, but that's, but that's where the previous shot was. Um, I do have to, uh, reach out to, uh, the owner of this property to have him refresh some of his E. N. S. controls. Um, some of them, uh, either not, either appear to not be present, or, uh, they're not in a good state of repair, so.
Yeah, can you go back, is there any, uh, erosion control at all with that?
Yeah, I, I, I did not see any in this area.
Back one more slide too, yeah, well, that, and that.
It's buried.
That's the culver, there's a culver going underneath the driveway.
This is the end of the E. N. S. control here. Um.
So they just don't have it on the driveway?
Right, so, so this part, um, I, I, I would want to clarify, uh, if the area that's, that's, uh, where this driveway appears to be roughed in is, uh, the same extent as to where they were when the Commission went out for their sidewalk. If it has changed in any way, uh, I would, I would obviously have a discussion with them as to what that change was, and whether it, it would warrant um, the, the, the Commission to make any modifications to their previously issued approval as appropriate.
I'm curious today, my recollection is that that was steeper, was it graded?
It's been widened and graded, for sure.
Uh.
And cleared of brush.
If, if it has been, um, you know, I, I, I would want to compare this to some other photographs out there, uh, that, that I took. And I, I would, I would want to talk to Mike Diorio, uh, to see what he's done in that area and why.
And also, they're gonna continue to pave this at some point, right? That, that in, initial, initial entry, I think that's getting paved.
I think they said they were going to do pressure stone.
Yeah, let me, let me go back to, uh.
Either way, there should be patches for the erosion.
Yeah, so, so.
Or if it's paving, then whatever.
Yeah, so, so it, it, it would be self-fenced, that, that should be installed at the very least as a temporary, uh, uh, um, uh, well, containment, mitigation, uh, element, um, just, just.
When it's, when it's done, you don't need the self-fencing anymore.
Well, you, you have to make sure that the, that the material is stabilized.
Right.
Right, but.
Near retention, or, yeah.
Right, but, but stabilization doesn't occur until the material's compacted and, and until it's treated and germinated, so, um.
He needs a full sun to.
Yeah, and, and, and I, and I would have him keep that up until a zoning compliance inspection was conducted where essentially the property was moving ready.
That's a good, I, I didn't even notice that, it's, oh, sorry, so.
Yeah, so, uh, that, that's, that's a point that I, that I would raise to, to Mr. Diorio and have him address, um, in the not too distant future, at, at the very least before the next significant event.
It, it looks to me like they had a big machine, and then the machine buried the fence.
Uh, I, I was hope that wasn't the case, but they do have an excavator out on site.
The big machine.
So, um, if they do need to make any alterations to, to reestablish any silvers that was there, I, I would have them use that. Okay, um, this is a pan view, um, for Aunt Patty's Lane West is off in the background here, where my cursor is. The water course is off in the backgrounds, um, the self-fence here is pretty well maintained, there is one noted point of failure uh, towards the back corner here, uh, which I will have the applicant address, this is really the only spot on the property outside of the accessway where it was a concern for me.
Looks very wet, was this after a big rain event? Oh, this was today.
This was today.
You also have a secondary.
Yep.
Yeah.
The old one that they never took.
That, this is, this was the old one that was there when the Commission went on their sidewalk. Okay. This is that same here again. Oh, excuse me.
Well, that's why it's there, it's there to catch that, it's, it's doing its job, but it's full.
Right, right.
So, yeah, good, good catch.
So, um, this is, this is along the.
I've never actually seen any action.
Yeah, no, that, that's.
Called Brazil.
Yeah, no, so, so this is why, when you, when you establish a self-fence, you have the bottom lip at least six inches into the soil, so that way it's essentially anchored by the weight of the material that it's on, that's, uh, uh, against it, so that way, when you have more soil added, it doesn't just fail at the bottom, it actually catches and stretches. That material is actually pretty flexible, and, and if you have this taking in the right way, it can hold quite a bit of weight, it's just a matter of making sure that the material does not reach the top of the self-fence, or if there are any rocks or, um, other debris that brushes up against the bottom, it rips and tears the material, so that way the soil and water just exit out, and you have another aluvial fan that results as, uh, part of that, so. Um, that's not an issue here, this is what I saw, um, but I, I would ask Mr. Diorio just to keep an eye on, on that section especially. The rest of the site looks pretty clear, it's me, um, and obviously, um, I would be back up there in the not too distant future just to keep an eye on things and make sure it's all still proceeding, uh, to plan, any questions on that?
You used the right word, the site is very clear.
It is, it is, um, it, it's, it's been standard practice in, in my experience, um, and, and the Commission's approval um, gave, gave license to this effect for, for the property owner to, to clear and regrade that portion of the property, because there was a lot of cut that had to be taken out, especially in the area of the septic system, and where you just saw the house on screen, um, the trees that the Commission did ask to be preserved, there were blue ribbons beyond the yellow fence or the self-fence, and those look like they haven't been touched. Uh, so I, I'm hopeful that, um, they remain, uh, unaffected throughout the rest of the.
They kept some, they kept some of the trees that were outside of the stated limited disturbance, they kept some of those, not all of them marked. But they did, and they took every, every tree down within the.
Yes.
They didn't keep any of them marked, of course, we had numerous.
Okay.
Just wanted to say that for.
Okay.
Total clear, that, that's the site.
Okay, if, 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 uh, if the applicant's able to replant trees, and I would certainly have that discussion with them, um, we would go through what could be replanted, depending, uh, on how appropriate it is, and, uh, you know, if, if, if those species would, would succeed in, in that same area, really, obviously, you go for that.
I, I understand the the wanting to preserve trees, and I understand your viewpoint, I don't think this Commission has the authority unless it affects a wetland, and we went through this shade and everything to dictate what trees can or cannot be.
Well, it, it's.
Unless you're getting closer to the wetlands, if you're in the, what we're referring to, open, the open clearance area.
Yeah.
They can remove whatever they want, they can take into consideration our requests, but we have no.
Well, it's, it, it, they, they are, to, to clarify, it would be any trees or vegetation that's within the one hundred foot of.
Right.
Obviously, trees that are beyond that, yeah, the Commission isn't really having to say for, to, to, um, or ability to enforce the property owner, excuse me, keeping those, but if, if you're talking about from a, um, a soil or a slope stabilization perspective.
Different, the effects.
Right.
But for this aesthetics or it's a tree, we have no, we went through this for the parking lot, for, for instance, it
Right.
Has to be of direct impact actually on the wetlands itself.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say the same thing, that I don't think we have anything in our current regulations that really say that a homeowner has to keep or replace or replant certain trees, am I wrong?
I have had some success.
Not in our regulations in Bethel.
Yeah, I, I have had some success, um, the Commission may recall, I don't know, I'm not even, you were here, but for when the, um, the water tank projects up on Long Metal Lane, um, there were some maple trees that were taken down, and I had asked, um, the applicant, which is the town of Bethel Public Works Department, to have their contractor, uh, plant silver maples as part of, um, the closing phases for that, for that project.
That, that was done as a courtesy, that's nothing you can enforce. I mean, and it's also from the town that you're part of, but it's not a enforceable request, it's a request to the homeowner that we would like to see, I mean, they could grant it, and you could not grant.
I, if I'm recalling correctly, it was a condition of, of approval, that, that, uh.
For that previous project, or for this project?
For, for that previous project.
Did we have that? I don't recall, I'd have to go back through, did we have?
I, I do not think that was, that was stipulated for this applicant.
To plant, to replant trees.
That's correct.
From the, which in the, has certain caliber size that I want to put up on here, and now we did. I am thinking about this a lot, or have been for a while, um, you know, about clear cutting, it just, the one thing that does say here is that like, we are cutting under users permitted as a right farming operations, but the clear provided that the provisions of this subdivision shall not be construed to include one of the bullet points is clear cutting timber, except for the extension of agricultural, but anyway.
So, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Um, the discussion around what you've got in front of you, is that relevant to Jennifer's Way, or would that be more relevant for our next point in the discussion when we're gonna talk about um, the Wetlands regulations?
We're gonna talk later, that's under Commission plans, right?
Right.
It's more about the regulations, so.
Okay, so maybe, can you hold that thought?
Yeah, and then, I was gonna maybe see if we can if I can present some information out our next.
Absolutely.
Yep.
Research that I've been doing.
Sure, but let me, let me get through the rest of my report first, if you don't mind, thank you. Um, anything else for, for Jennifer's Way? Okay, the last thing I would have, um, is, uh, an application that is before the Planning and Zoning Commission, nine Putnam Park Road, I, I would advise that if anyone, uh, makes any inquiries to you, um, regarding that application, uh, or, um, the review process itself, um, don't dive into it at all, and, and, and don't engage on that, um, that, that application is still under review by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and I don't know how soon they would render a decision. Um, but I, I think it would just be, um, advantageous for you, not, not that I don't think anyone's going to bring that up, but just as a precaution, um, just, please, uh, please be cognizant of that, just going forward, so. Um, and that's really all I have for you guys tonight.
Okay, thanks, Dave, and anybody else have anything they wanted to ask before we move on? Okay, all right, then I think we can move into Commission comments. Yes, sir.
Oh, you put it after Commission comments, sorry. Sorry.
I didn't, I think it's gonna not happen. But we, they still have, they still have this section, all right, so Commission comments, Nico Jordan had requested that we open a discussion, um, about our regulations. And so, as the person who requested that, did you want to open that discussion?
Yeah.
So, all right.
I don't have any written material or amendments or anything that to put, to put forth tonight, I just wanted to try your minds on certain.
Yep, let's go.
Certain things, uh, one thing that we were just talking about, which I was more recently, just by, inspired by the Jennifer's Way. Jennifer's Way, um, application and construction was just this idea of clear cutting. On a forest site around a wetland within our one hundred foot upland review area. I'm also wondering if maybe we should, um, look into the. Um, there's certain other review areas that we could adopt for our, our regulations. We could increase it to two hundred feet, for example, following, um, you know, other. Um, other, what other towns in Connecticut have done. Um, without trying to make too much crazy work. It's also been suggested that we introduce something called riparian buffers around watercourses. Um, permanent watercourses that always have water. So that's something I want us to look into. Um, those can be much more, like, much broader, like five hundred. I think Don and we know that we received from. Don Warfield, who's a member of the Bethel Land Trust, um, mentioned a seven hundred and fifty foot riparian buffer zone. Around the river. So I need information about this. I need to know what our bodies of water need for the filtration that they need. So that we can pass these, the right, we can pass the right regulations and have the right values. Um, as we, as times change and we understand more about our water sources and. How to keep them, you know, safe and clean for public use. So I actually think we probably want to review those numbers. Like the, and the terminologies of them. So a wetland upland review area is different than riparian buffer zone. Okay, why? How much of those do we need? Do we need a wider buffer zone around for pools he had suggested in the statement?
Can you also provide what our riparian buffer zone is?
Yeah, I want to talk about all this. Um, I want definitely, I want us to define. The terms and.
And I would also like to know. At a seven hundred and fifty foot, when you say buffer zone?
What does that mean?
To a seventh's property, because right now you just knocked out half.
So that is might happen and that's kind of the point of possible.
But what's the benefit to the wetlands? I think we gotta.
Development happening in a close proximity.
No, I understand that, but I think we gotta be careful. I, careful not to project. Our own feelings about development or more development, life development. I look at it as. Does, all right, the, let's say we have, we have a hundred foot upland reviewer. You move it to two hundred feet now. Does that benefit the wetlands at all? Does this buffer zone do anything besides? Just preventing people from build to the, help the wetlands at all? The, what's the benefit? You know what I'm saying?
Good questions.
You know, I'll tell you right now, clear cutting, if it's, I, I don't, I like to see trees on property. But unless it's affecting the wetlands, I don't think we have the right to say, I like trees, leave the trees. Because that's, someone bought the property, they need to be able to develop their property. With their, you know, within the laws and we don't have the right to tell them, you know, it's like all of a sudden. I don't like Cape Cod houses. Well, you can't build a Cape Cod house. I don't have that right. You know, my thing is how it directly affects the wetland. I'm not saying no to the riparian buffer zone. I don't even know what it is, so I can't say that it, it becomes, well, it just looks good, you know.
So what it will do based on science and research, which if, I'm gonna need, we're gonna need more. Scientific, um, papers about why trees are good for. Uh, riverine and wetland ecosystems, what functions and values they provide by holding up the riverbank. By filtering water, by creating an atmosphere or in the soil that filters the. The bacteria that we need to clean the effluent that we produce through development, through.
And also the riparian, but like, I mean, I know you did throughout seven hundred and fifty.
That's a lot of science and.
So let's say.
Big numbers, whatever. Those are all.
Let's say we said, okay, buffer zone seven hundred, I don't even know what it is, seven hundred and fifty feet. You need this buffer zone, any wetlands, and I'm just, I have no idea what it is. Let's say we pass that. You just now affected every homeowner in Bethel, their property value. Cause you, there's lots there. And again, if you can't build in that buffer zone, you just. Effect, you're gonna have everyone.
Somebody's property.
Yeah, you, it would, and you're gonna have probably three, four hundred people go to the tax accessory office and say. My property is not worth anything now. So there's a lot of.
It's more of a vision for the future because you can't, we can't retroactive. I don't think we can legally retroactively, um. You know, necessarily influence or impose like regulations on somebody's property that they've already purchased. Anything after that.
All right, so.
It will, it will inform me whether I'm gonna come to this town, I'm like, you're, I'm gonna go and buy this property along the river. Where most of the trees are in, within this riparian buffer zone and. That can't be cut, so I'm not gonna buy that.
But the property is already owned by somebody.
And it was an approved.
But here's the thing though. Right, I have a piece of property. All right, let's do my property, Fifty West Street, pretend it's a building lot, no house on it. I have a, a stream going through there. In fact, it's runoff, say it's a stream. Okay. Nothing on it. It's worth so much as a building lot. It's grandfathered in because I own it now. If I sell it, it's gotta go into the new zone. What happened to that value of that property? Because now you can't build on it. So now it does have open space. So my two hundred thousand dollar lot. Just became twenty thousand dollars. And I, I'm just. I'm just letting you know my mindset. My mindset is, how does it benefit the wet?
No.
It's not some, I mean, it'll be a lengthy discussion probably, but I just want to let you know, not to have it tonight, but where I am with that. Love to see a lot of trees and everything, but we don't have the right to oppose our viewpoint. On a property owner. So it's, it's a viewpoint.
What Pat is saying is it's a balance between the interest.
Yes, not be a viewpoint or like, I like trees.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
This is like scientific, just straight fact about here's what this forest will do for this. Uh, the health and welfare.
Exactly.
System of which the people living downstream or in the neighborhood are part as well.
Yes.
It's a balance.
I'm just letting you know that when you're doing the research, where my mindset.
I don't know if there's any specific numbers that, that could, or numbers. That, that could serve the, the purposes that, that you're describing to. I, I mean, uh, every, every town. To some degree is different with whether or not they've, they've adopted a riparian buffer zone or if they have in fact. A one hundred foot regulated upland review area, which is pretty standard for most communities in Connecticut. In my experience, some of them have it down to fifty. Some of them have it up to two hundred, some of them have it to even more. And then they have. They may have additional areas within that, like the riparian buffer zone, that may, um. Further restricts what, what you're able to do in that, in that area. It, it, it depends on what the resource is.
So we're not setting precedent here by, by having stricter requirements for wetlands.
No, no, but, but again, you, you, you want the, you want the regulation to be appropriate to the resource that it's part of. So for, for us, you know, the, the, the main resources that. Will come under this commission's purview, they're tributaries to, um, the Still River, right? Most of, not all of them. Um, so you're talking about, uh, East Swamp Brook, Limecham Brook, Wolf Pit Brook, Simpaw Brook. Stibbles Brook, uh, and one other, one or two others. And then the associated wetlands that, that, that come with those and any headwater streams. Um, you know, in, in, in a town like Brookfield or New Milford where they have the Husatonic River. They may have regulations that are more restrictive with respect to that resource because of how ecologically valuable. The Husatonic River is compared to perhaps a, a, a resource here in Bethel. Not, not to dismiss. How valuable these are, but again, y- y- you want, you want the regulation to have good reasoning. To say, okay, if, if I, if I'm going to say you can't do this, here's wrong. And, and here's, here's supporting evidence that says, okay, this is what can happen in this area. There's, there's soil science. There's wetland science that goes with this. It's, it's not just, we're saying this.
No, it's all about clean water.
Yes, absolutely.
Surface and groundwater.
Right.
So your surface waters are the ones that flow through the rivers and the water course, the wet, water sheds you just mentioned. And they flow either north, but eventually down south to Long Island. So it's about preserving. The quality of the water in the Long Island South, at the outflow from these, these waters which start here. And further north.
Yeah, right.
So that's huge.
Right.
We have many organizations who care a lot.
Yeah. We, we are but one small cog in, in the, in the system.
And I want to make sure that we do everything that we can and should be doing.
Of course.
To clean and have to protect the water for the future generations of our community.
Yeah.
And state. So, um, and the groundwater.
Right.
Like, the thing I take for granted and the most precious and important thing from the world is the ability to draw water from my well, from the high aquifer. That exists here. On that Reading Ridge, you know, in Bethel, the wolf, between whatever, Wolf Pit Brook and. East Swamp Brook. And that, you know. We just need to make sure that those are not being repaired, I think.
Sure.
So whatever that takes, we need, but the research and I have evidence, I'm questioning, so. One of the things I'd like to, to discuss more about this is like, look at a town like Easton, right? So you see like the, the reservoirs over there, um. Kind of like reservoir and eastern reservoir. And there's Route fifty eight that goes south, right? And like, who is the Quarian Water Company?
Right.
Right, currently formerly Bridgeport Hydro, like whatever, they, for the last hundred something years. For some reason deemed it necessary and lies to their, like, functioning of their business plan, because they're private, huge private companies, right? That own land, provide drinking water for bigger, in places like Bridgeport.
Yeah.
Mostly Bridgeport.
Yeah, so they are, they are a quasi-public agency in that they, they are a. A private company that, that essentially manages a public water supply. Um. When, when, when you're talking about, uh, uh, water as, as a drinking resource. There are aquifer regulations that, that also tie into that, which this commission also, uh, here in Bethel. Serves as, as, as the agency for.
Right.
For those regulations.
Is it those?
So, so those, uh, I just, I just want to make sure we don't, that, that we keep the two distincts because they, they serve. Very different purposes, although it's, it's in the same vein. It's, it protects. Uh, water quality. Uh, so if, if, if you want to entertain those, I, I can't say. When the last time those were revised.
Well, I think maybe we can all like, I'll go over this again before I.
Sure.
If you guys want to, right?
Are you saying there's already a regulating body that's managing those? Or are you saying that that falls under our?
That's, that's, that's you guys.
Yeah.
And I, the, the last time.
Trying to clarify.
Yeah.
Like you were saying.
The last time those actually came into play was for a house, oh geez. It's off of, um, I think it's, geez, no, it's not Punches Road. Oh, what's that other road?
Long Hill.
You're on a hill sounds right. I'm gonna, I'm gonna look this up now. I have to look this up.
So can I finish my point while you're doing that?
Yeah, go ahead.
So just that, you know, it's seems remarkable to say the least that these, these huge, these huge companies for the last century and a half. Or more have been buying up as much land as they possibly can surrounding these water. Oh, I mean, we're talking whole water sheds there, and they're cleaning throughout the domain. They're buying, you know, pe- buying people out of their houses. Like all the ruined houses around Route fifty eight, uh, New Trenton Pike, uh, Reading, down to Weston. Some of the most beautiful woodlands we have around, but that's just secondary. So why are they doing?
All right, this goes back into. I won't let you know my feelings on riparian, I mean, domain, but again. The regulation has to benefit the wetland or the aquifer, not our feelings. On what we would like to see happen with property or a company or anything like that.
Right, but my question just, it seems like it's just pointing right to the answer. It's like, why are they buying up all this land? To, to protect. It begs the question, to protect the water supply. And leaving it as wood, so not developing, not developing, like some of the most valuable land in the country, right, in the world. Woodland, you know. We've been in Weston, Wilton, Ridge, Reading.
I, I.
They're not building a single thing and, and Easton posts on every one of their drainways, they say. You know, uh, uh, for protection zone or whatever their, you know, sensitive watershed, uh, don't dump your gas down here, whatever it is.
Yeah, well. Yeah, placing shields on cash basis is one thing. Buying properties is, is, is.
I don't want to, I'm not trying to minimize that, like.
Yeah.
What they're buying this land and they're not doing, why?
I.
Why are we allowing clear cutting right next to a bu- budding the Wolf Pit Brook?
Cause it's not affecting what Wolf Pit Brook and someone owns that property wants to clear cut.
I'm not sure our regulations are matching with the actual reality of the water.
And that's something we can look into.
So, um, I, I think it would be worth, um, getting some context for myself.
About, we need to legal, about.
Well, I, I, I.
Who's grandfathered in, who, if, if you invest in the land, and maybe people are buying land to target the timber front. I know I would. If I see a bunch of white oak and fancy, high-end lumber.
Yeah, well.
One of the calculuses that I'm gonna put into my purchase of that land is, okay, I'm gonna get some of my, some of my capital investment back.
Right.
That is a huge loss to the community, the environment, the watershed and the, the whole, the whole.
Yeah, but, but.
Because we've lost this forest that.
But now, now you're vent, now you're venturing into timber harvesting as an agricultural use, which, which the, which the regulations. Do provide some exemptions for, for farming uses, especially of that nature.
Clear cutting for agriculture, no, this is clear cutting for residential. It's not, no.
Oh, so, so, okay, so, so, so.
It's clear, they could try to claim agricultural exemption, I'm sure they would, because I'm gonna harvest timber for what?
Well, no, if, if, if the, if the use of the property is to construct a single family dwell, and then. I, I think you, I think this commission would interpret that as, as not being an exempted use. That's, that's a regular activity.
Yeah.
But, but if the sole purpose of buying a property is to take trees, sell them, harvest them. And then replant on the site, then that's. Okay, okay, okay.
Um, but then, but this question, I did some research with other new, new towns like over in New York, and some do put, have, um. Included in the regulations, whether it's in the wetlands regulations or the, I mean, zoning regulations above. To try to disincentivize the cutting of some of those trees. By putting price tags on them. So past a certain diameter, you can count, count how many there are and you pay a fee or a fee in lieu of.
Again, this.
Six or more on seven thousand five hundred square feet or ten or more.
When, when, all I say is when you do your research and this, this might be a point, other commission members could feel totally different. To me, you would have to show how it benefits the wetland or the water. And I'll give you, I'll give you a real life example. I just brought, I just bought property in Pennsylvania, playing on clear cutting. If this regulation was to be down there when I bought it.
Right, and well in Villas peoples, what they're, what they're.
Right, that's what I'm saying. It's gotta show to me, again, this is me, none of the other commission members. How what we're doing affects the wetland. Not my personal opinion is, I like it looking like this. I want it to stay looking like this. I, I like the benefits of trees, absolutely.
But that's not.
How, how's it, how's it affecting the wet?
So we're gonna focus on wetlands here.
You can, however. Again, this is, and I want to be clear, this is my opinion. This is not, I mean, the wetland, the other. You know, permission is on the wetlands, may feel, no, absolutely, bring forward and, you know, look, that's fine. That's. You know, my, my opinion is, if it's not affecting the wetlands. I, I'm not gonna dictate to someone my feeling on it.
Yeah.
So, uh, this, this is a problem for me to get some other, uh, experts to the table. Among which would be Attorney Andrews, which if he's already going to be. Among which would be Attorney Andrus, which if he's already going to be here for the commission's executive session. Maybe worth having him, uh, offer his input for this. Um, also as an, as a resource that the commission, uh, has renewed in the past, it may be worth getting someone from the Northwest Conservation District. To attend the next meeting, see what they have, uh, see what, uh, insight they can offer. With what regulation revisions they may have seen. Uh, I know, uh, Cynthia Rovinoitz, uh, I believe she retired earlier this year. If not, uh, late the year before. Uh, but I, I'd like to think that her expert or whoever else is up there now. Uh, still offers some insight to the, to that process and, and give some ideas for what the commissions should consider.
That sounds really good.
Sure.
If you could score that.
Yeah.
Anybody from the HVA? Run a ballot we should do.
Uh, my just, I, yes, transky if, if I'm, if I'm, uh, getting his name.
What's the HVA, the Hudson Valley?
Husetonic Valley Associate, Associate.
Say what? Rodrigo, is, would, would he be, uh, who's the, yeah, would, would somebody from that, like maybe Rodrigo be an appropriate?
Yeah.
This is a discussion or is it coming out of his?
I, I, I can definitely ask, and if, and if they, and if they think that there's someone that's more appropriate, I'm sure he would recommend them to me.
Do you know how to get in touch with these people?
Absolutely.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
That would be awesome.
I would say, Dave, thank you for looking into that. Thank you for bringing the points to the table, Nico. I think you said to me either early into the meeting or before the meeting began that we do not have a heavy agenda for the next meeting at the moment.
We'd not.
Do you wanna be cognizant of the fact that we're inviting a lot of people to come, and I wanna make sure that they look like they like. So we're not here until four in the morning.
This is gonna be just the beginning of the discussion.
Understood, but if we're inviting all of these people to come to the meeting, then I wanna be respectful of their time as well as the commission's time and make sure that. We're inviting them at the right moment.
Yeah.
We're not really clear on what we want to talk about, and we don't have our own questions framed, and I don't wanna waste their time having them come. And I also don't want it to be a meeting that's gonna last until the.
And, and I also think it's beneficial to have all seven of you here. Um, cause for whatever input Paul and Proda or Jay Oldham or, um, Kevin could offer. They, they should partake in the discussion, so hopefully they'll make a point. I, I know we're getting into the summer months now. Um, where, where they can attend. Uh, I'll, I'll put an email out there just to let you guys all know that, that we're entertaining this to be on the agenda for next time. And it all comes together and everybody's able to make it.
That sounds good. And then can I, if you guys would like me to or don't mind, can I send some whatever information that I think is. Put it through Dave, I'll just email you.
Share it to me.
And you share with.
And I will distribute Jeff Black.
Absolutely.
It's digital, maybe we can have a folder?
Yeah, I think we'll drive a folder.
Yep, that would be the idea, and, and, and so what I would do.
Yeah, cause those, the peak skill, right, like the town regulations and the Punches.
Yeah, so what, what I would do is, is much like, um, uh, is standard operating procedure for. Um, uh, meetings, this, for the past however many years we've been doing this, also the Google Drive. And, um, excuse me. And I'll have a folder that, that essentially dives into all of this stuff, regulations, uh, documents, reports, what have you. And, uh, essentially, the, the link will be different, but what's the contents of that drive will just be copied over for each new meeting. So, uh, if any of you guys find anything on your own, send it to me, I'll compile it and I'll put it together and just. Have a rolling record for that.
And you can keep it rolling, and so, and we can have it, some of the stuff sooner or later, if there's a lot of reading material, whatever, I'll push anybody to.
Not a problem.
Like a week before.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, I, I would, I would.
Try to get stuff to you soon.
I would try to get that out to everybody as.
We also probably won't have time to go through, if there's a lot of content, all in one meeting, so.
It's mostly just to make, it's like.
I think it's a good ongoing discussion for the commission to be having, and we can have that on our meeting agendas, and. I don't know that it's something that we immediately need to find a resolution on. It's something that we're exploring and thinking about and framing our thoughts on, and then maybe. We address the regulations at a later point in time after we've really spent some time on this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thanks, Nico.
Uh, just wanted to bring up one thing, while the attorney's here, maybe something in regulations can be put in, maybe there already is. When you order a cease and desist, I'm trying to figure out the whole right path. Can we add to that after a certain time period? That a lien is put on a person's property? Ooh, I wanna give some teeth, because let, let me tell you. I'm not seeing people respect cease.
Now you're talking about financial penalties, and now it's a matter to be taken up with the board select.
Okay, well, let's start with our lawyer and see if it's viable first, because our cease and desist, from what I've seen.
Oh, no.
And it's been mockery with one of them, and one didn't even show up today from what I understand.
There, there have, um, uh, area towns have previously set up a citation ordinance. Whether it's for zoning matters or wetlands matters, and it's proven to have.
I wanna make sure you have teeth when you're.
It's, it's pretty effective, but the, but the, but the problem is, is that it's not something that this commission can enact on its own.
And nor should we.
Right, and, 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 uh, planning a zoning is having the exact same issue.
Okay.
And, um, i- if, if you feel so strongly, bring it, bring it to the selectmen's attention.
Okay.
And, and say, hey, you, you should consider getting the ball rolling for having a citation ordinance.
So would that request come from our official commission, or could it come from a commission member?
I, I, I would recommend that it would come from the commission as a body.
So how would, I know that Dan has, um, office hours and such, but I don't feel like that's probably the appropriate way to bring this to him.
Um, he, he is an ex-official member for all of the commissions in Bethel, so. Uh, if, if, if you wanted to bring this to his attention, I could, I'm sorry, I could invite him to the next meeting.
Are you, are you a member of the zoning board?
Me?
Yes.
I'm not a member of any.
No. Do you participate in the zoning board? Like Beth is a.
Yeah, so, so.
Here's what I'm asking, instead of just coming from us, why don't we check the zoning board if they feel the same? And then it would come from the zoning board and us to enact something like this.
Okay, so, um, I believe the planning zoning commission is having a regular meetings tomorrow night. I don't know if I could jump on, uh, or tie it on to Beth's staff report, whatever she may have prepared for that. I mean, if, and if their meeting is much longer than ours, I don't know if it would be appropriate to tack that on at the end of a lengthy meeting. But if it is appropriate, I, I would say, hey, Bethel Wellness Commission is, is considering, you know. Discussing a citation ordinance, they don't necessarily know what it would look like and what that would entail, but if you guys are interested in that. You wanna tie it on and, and. And let him do in the discussion.
So will you be at that meeting tomorrow?
Yes.
Okay, otherwise I could go.
Laura, you've been quiet. Was there anything that you wanted to add before we move the discussion to the next phase of the meeting?
No, that's okay.
Okay, thanks. Anybody else have any more comments? Okay, then I'm gonna move to our moved item, which is old business. I note that no one is here. Is anyone on Zoom?
I'm not seeing anyone on Zoom for this enforcement matter, Madam Chair.
May I ask this, um, what is the notification process for that?
So they, they had asked, um, they had asked when the next regular meeting would be. And, and I had told, and I had told them that it would be held tonight at seven o'clock in this meeting room, if, if my memory serves me correctly. Uh, I, I don't know, cause they, cause when last I, um, uh. Exchanged emails with them, they had said they were gonna find a counsel to help them get through this process. I don't know if they're still doing that, or if others.
Share that with us at our last meeting a month ago.
Yes, so i- it's, I, I have been engaged with other stuff. Uh, and, and I apologize for this kinda getting put on the back burner.
You're just gonna need to apologize, Dave. It's on to, you gave a cease and desist, it's on to the people you gave it to to follow through with it at this point. My point was they were aware of this meeting today.
Yes.
And, don't get me wrong, benefit now, I still play it that way, you know, but, you know, past applications have shown. You know, people need to take a cease and desist a lot more serious. At least they could have had some type of communication of why they're not here. You know, um, and let me ask you, what is the next step if they don't respond by the next thing?
Another question for Chuck.
Okay, let's, I'd like to know the process because he does keep kicking the ball down the thing, cease and desist.
Right, I, 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 I would be inclined to think that, I, I, I don't know how appropriate an injunction would be, because the work has already been done. So you're not really.
Yeah, I don't know the whole legal stuff to this, I just wanna.
Yeah.
I wa- I wanna make it so you get cease and desist.
I, I, I think, I think that the next item would be to issue an, an order to correct.
Yep.
And perhaps, um, stay, it's, give them another letter in writing that says this is when the next meeting will be. You and, you and or your duly authorized representative can make an appearance to discuss. The matter with the commission as to why, uh, or why not this water should remain in effect. And then we essentially go through the, the, the same process that we did with Seven Mark Wall Road.
Theoretically, all right, let, let me use, I'm a thing, but let's say. I don't know, Eight Main Street has the same situation.
Uh huh.
As this one does now.
Uh huh.
They don't show up next meeting. What happens then?
Um.
What power do we, I mean, they just don't show up and we keep asking them to come, or that's what I'm saying, where? What's the repercussion of not doing anything? And that, that's what I'm getting at, with this whole discussion on a lien or whatever.
Yeah, no, that, that, that's a good point, because, uh, 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 apart, apart from awards or corrects, uh, beyond that, there, there's nothing in the regulations.
Right.
In the, in the way of a penalty.
And I, I mean, I don't wanna sit here and start fighting people or anything, the reason I'm saying a lien is. You don't wanna fix your property, when you sell the house, there's a lien on it for the person who's gonna be buying to fix it. So that, that's one, again, I mean, we weigh.
Why don't you go that way rather than a fine?
Because a fine, I'm finding that person, what are you finding that person for?
For taking material.
For not presenting their violation to the committee.
Could be a fine, but you're not correcting.
You don't show up in court when you have a summons.
Fine, you know, again, some type of repercussion for not doing something, because right now it's like, hey, I see soon this is. And if I, if I got one, I go to my lawyer and go, what happens if I do nothing? It'd be like.
Nothing.
Nothing. So guess what I'm doing?
So they're not here, which is probably wise.
And I'm using, I'm using general, I'm not using anyone in front of us right now.
About this application without the.
No, I, I'm not talking, I'm talking generally, that's why I'm saying this is exactly.
Can't talk about the details of it because we don't have any information on it, so.
And, and.
Yeah, we do, we have pictures on the public record.
Right, but that's, but that's all I have for you at this point.
So I'm just, can, can we talk about going by that? It's, they remove material.
Yeah.
Extraction of soil material from the water core.
Yeah, the, the, and, and the, the.
So what would, summary is. If they came here, what would we ask them to do?
Well.
The cease and desist to correct, are we gonna have them put the dirt back in the water course that they've probably been clearing of debris? For decades whenever they bought the house.
Right.
We don't know.
Right.
It could be like, oh, okay, we understand why you did it, you did it correctly, okay, thank you for coming in front of us. You're okay, or maybe like, hey, you have to reconstruct this.
I, I.
We don't have enough information. We need them to present what they've done and we need to review what they've done.
Yeah, and, and I think that.
I don't know what all they remove.
And, and I think the MO with, with some of these, i- is not necessarily to be an S post, X post facto application. Where, where they're, where they're getting a slap on the wrist for having done the work. But, 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 but if, if, if it's, if it's recurring maintenance. If it's an activity where in however many years' time they forecast that they're going to do it again, you can at least say, hey. We have something on the record that we can refer to, we're here to do this, you don't have to go through all of this again. Or if, uh, if it's been so long since a permit was last issued. They can come back to you and say, hey, I, I'd like to renew this, or, or I'd like to resubmit based on what I submitted before. Are you gonna do the same thing? Yes. Are you not? No. Why? And, and, and you have a dialogue from there, but, but you have to have something to start with.
So we just want that dialogue with them?
It, it's, it's.
Cause if I were them, I would, I wouldn't wanna get caught up in like all this whole fiasco of like. No offense to us, like, you know, uh, whatever, who we're putting Bjork in through.
No, but, but, but. But, but this, but this. Yeah.
Most, most.
Of course, they're not gonna show up.
But, but this, but this speaks to.
Most cease and desist, when Dave or whoever issues it, they come in front of us, we, it does like a normal. Permit or understanding what's happening, and it gets resolved quickly, easily and all that, and, you know, there's times it doesn't.
And, and, and this, and this speaks to the concerns that you had during the commission comments. A- as broad brush as, as the procedure may be. This isn't the zoning regulations where, um, you have very specific, um, review processes. And permitted uses that, that, that say, okay, if you're doing this, you need this, if you do this, you need that. It's, it's kind of, okay, you wanna do an activity, you kinda have to explain to us what it is. And, you know, depending on if you're trying to go for an exemption, or if you're trying to do an agent approval with me, or. If you wanna do something that involves a lower activity, you have to come to me first, regardless.
Come talk about what the levels.
Right, and, and, and in some cases, it's, it's with the wetlands commission, but the point is that you have, you have to, you have to start establishing. That process and getting consistent results with it somewhere.
So they just went and they did it.
Uh, that, yeah.
So they just.
We give them the benefit of the doubt. They may not have known that they needed to check in with us, so we're calling it to their attention that this is a regulated. Could be a regulated activity, but it's certainly within a zone that we have our.
Right.
Regulations based on, so it needs review.
Right. That's, that's, that's the whole MO for it. I, 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 I don't like enforcing the regulations to a cumulative. And I don't, and from my experience with the commission, that's not what your MO is either. But at the same time, you're charged with these duties and responsibilities. I, I would be doing it a disservice as an agent to turn a blind eye to someone for as well intended as they may be. To perform maintenance, I, I, I would, um, I would hold anyone to the same standard as I would anyone else. Plain and simple. And if the property owners give good information. And have a good, uh, discussion with the applicant, or, or with the commission as to why they did what they did. The decision for what they need to do ultimately lies with you. You know, I'm, I'm not making this decision, I'm just bringing it to your attention, right? So, but you won't know about it unless I bring it to you in the first place. Unless you're investigating them on, on your own, which I wouldn't, I wouldn't advise you to. Um, or if it's something that's so egregious, then hey, we have to have a special meeting, we have to do something right now. Uh, luckily, I, I haven't had that experience.
Oh, just wait. The way things are going, yeah, okay, um.
Will you try to ask one more?
Yeah.
Will you try to get in touch with them again?
Yeah, like I said, I'm gonna issue them another letter. And I'm gonna say, hey, the, the commission has another regular meeting scheduled for July twenty second, please make an appearance at this meeting. I don't know how else, I, I don't know what more I could add, but I, I can essentially reiterate everything I did from the previous letter.
Yeah.
So that's what I plan to do.
Thank you. All right, any more on one oh seven Rockville Road?
One oh seven.
Punches, my, my, you can understand. No?
No.
All right, moving to public comments. Do we have anyone here from the public would like to make comments this evening?
I just wanna keep up my consecutive, uh, attendance.
You just like being here with us. Is there anybody online that would, that might want to make public comments? All right, well, that concludes our agenda, so I would entertain a motion. To adjourn. You want me to do this?
Make the motion that we adjourn.
At?
Eight fourteen.
On?
I have no idea what the days do, it's June forty fourth, June twenty fourth.
Twenty twenty four.
Twenty twenty four.
Second. Vote.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I don't think I need to jump through the rest. Motion passes, meeting adjourned.
Okay.